And I'm just inquiring if it should-
Oh, it should be, yeah.
American Fencing is, that's on the order of fifteen hundred.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna get started this evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December twentieth, two thousand and ten meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Our first order of business will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're gonna have to hold off on the minutes. And next is announcements. Are there any announcements? Just make a brief one. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to wish everyone out there a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We will not be meeting next Monday. So I just want to let everyone know that. So I just wanna, again, on behalf of the Board, extend our best wishes to everyone for happy and healthy. And we'll see you, that would be, I guess, after the new year.
Three, January.
January third, so. All right, now we'll head into public comment. This is an opportunity for those in the audience who'd like to speak before the Board. We do have one gentleman who is here. So if you mind coming down, just state your name and your address for the record. And if you could limit your comments to three or four minutes, that'd be great, thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to the Board this evening. I've been following the budget process and the meetings relatively pretty close on the TV and around town. I have one concern. I realize that the Budget Committee is put together to basically try to save the taxpayers a considerable amount of money every year, and they try to do what's best for the taxpayers as a committee, as a group. I just have one concern I'd like to share with this Board. I would like to have the Board of Selectmen come back and revisit the fire department article. I believe the money was removed from the CIP budget and basically the line was zeroed out, if I understand correctly. I feel for the safety of the members of the fire department and the safety of the people for the town of Gofftown that our fire apparatus be brought up to standard so that we have reliable fire apparatus that will basically get us to the fire and back to the fire stations. Some of the stations, some of the fire trucks that you want to get rid of now, or we're trying to get rid of now, are well over thirty years old or around thirty years old. We're trying to basically consolidate two fire trucks into one, and I think it'll be more advantageous in, in the long run for the plans that are coming up ahead. And all I'm asking in the long run is that the Board please give reconsideration to what the Budget Committee has done and revisit all of the budgets, not only the fire department budget, but revisit all of the fire department's budget, police, fire, highway, everybody who had money taken away from them. I ask that you please revisit that and see if we can make a change in that and try to come up with a plan that will make it feasible for the people of the town of Gofftown, not only to have the lowest amount of tax dollar increase in their taxes, but to allow the people of Gofftown to have some of the best apparatus, the fire apparatus that needs to be on the road at all times so that the people will be protected very safe and they know that they'll, they'll have the best protection that's available. Thank you very much.
That was Mark Lemay for the record.
Yes.
Okay. At six-thirty, we're gonna have a presentation. So we're gonna skip right to the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. Tomorrow morning, eight o'clock, Steve is the HR Committee. Tuesday at seven is the Budget Committee. Consensus folder tonight includes the AP Lawrence, the employee status reforms for two resignations, event permit license for the library's Skywatch on December twenty-ninth, and several LGC agreements, some that aren't listed in your packet here. Besides property liability insurance and workers' comp, there's the TRIM, which is the three-year agreement to get the special pricing, the FSA, which is the flexible spending account, and then there's package pricing. And those are all in your signature folder for the Chairman's signature. Also, there's contractual agreement with Broadleaf Services. This is for the server virtualization project, which was awarded last week.
Okay, would the Board like to do this all as one? Or is there a particular matter that we would need to separate out? What is the Board's preference?
Make a motion to accept the consensus vote.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, second.
Second. Any discussion in particular? I'm, I'm just, you know, some of these things are standard, but the LGC agreements, are there any questions with regards to that? Just, I, I just want the, the record to reflect that we did look at another carrier. So Sue, if you could kinda just talk briefly about that. There are some who think that perhaps LGC is the only show in town. They are one of only two shows really in town, Primex being the other one.
Right, there are two public risk pools in the state of New Hampshire that serves municipalities and school districts, one being Primex and the other one LGC. And we did do a comparison of both and opted to stick with LGC.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the consensus folder, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? And any extensions? It's five, is it five-zero? Okay. Next.
The assessor recommends the land use change tax form eighty-five from map thirty, lot four, A.
Motion to accept the assessors' recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five-zero.
I asked one to bring to your attention, and all of you were here before the meeting, that the assessor did find a property that is, has been taxed by City Manchester that's actually in Goffstown. He talked to the city assessor. The records have been changed for future tax billing and we're looking into if any of the previous years can be paid a reimbursement to the town of Goffstown.
Okay.
Good job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, he was checking current use, and that's how it came out. Appointments tonight. We have one to add to the list here. It's the Rail Trail Committee, John G. Stafford, forty-eight Jasmine Lane, and that's recommended by the committee at the last meeting. Also, the Cable Television Committee recommends the reappointment of James Pingree and Ryan Casey. And the Library Trustees recommend the appointment of Wayne Eddy as an alternate.
Is there a motion to accept the committee recommendations?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. About this time every year, you get a request to authorize a pass-through of a stipend for the CERT director. And that's fifteen hundred. As you know, our CERT team is funded through Volunteer New Hampshire, and they budget a fifteen hundred stipend annually for the CERT director. Your authorization is needed to accept the check and pay the CERT director.
Do we have a motion?
So move.
Okay. Seconded by, I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's five-zero.
In your packet of five B, you have the bid specifications for the annual report. Basically, the change is to change the book size to eight and a half by eleven to accommodate the full audit report. Also, the, the binding would change from perfect bound to saddle stitch. And the quantities, if you want, we can change from two thousand and fifteen hundred. It appears we have about five hundred left over from last year.
And that's what we, we had?
We had two thousand last year, yep.
Okay.
And how do we budget for the CDs, the disc, the disc?
Putting them on the web. We haven't had much requests for CDs.
Okay.
Just a question on that. I just have a concern that if we go to the fifteen hundred, that it's, that we're kinda, we're kinda cutting it kinda close. So I guess my question is, is there a reason from the two thousand above fifteen? Is that a pricing break or?
Five hundred, the pricing breaks usually come in volumes of five hundred, six hundreds.
I understand. I guess, I, I just have a concern that fifteen hundred might be a little bit tight. The last thing that I would, I would hate to have people have run out. That's, that's all I'm just.
I, I might have said this in years, in years past. I, I think we're going more electronic with things. And if anything, I'd like to see us wean off the paper. We're not legally allowed to wean off the paper. But as we can, I think more and more people are just going off with it.
I don't disagree with you. I just have a concern that we might be going a little bit too fast.
Would you like me to get, build something into the bid specs that if we have to do a rerun of five hundred, they'll do it for the same price per book?
Can I comment on that? The only concern I have, if you do that, the only concern I have is that you might be raising the prices on the fifteen hundred.
Could happen to, yeah.
You know, unless there's somehow in the RFP you could put in for... I, I don't know, I just-
Printing is seventy percent setup and fifty percent the runtime, so.
Yep, it is.
We could do it as an Android or BlackBerry app as well. You can download it.
Well, the only thing, you have to be careful of what, what Trojan you're gonna have in the app.
Right. Quick question. Sue, what, you talked about going eight and a half, eight and a half by eleven for the full audit report. What, what did we, what are we adding that we have not added in?
Well, when LGC ranks the annual reports, ours will never rank because at some point in the past, we decided not to put the full audit in. So now we've put that full audit in. And it wouldn't cost us anymore to prepare it because the auditor gives it to us in PDF for an eight and a half by eleven page, but.
Will the book cost more because it's an eight and a half by eleven?
No, it should be less because you're not going perfect bound anymore.
Just one question.
All right.
If it's gonna be a different size, are we still gonna have the same? Because we've always had, in the past, we've had a concern on the print size.
Type size? The actual font size?
Right, I'm sorry. Yeah, because for-
I'd like to leave it at like eleven, no smaller than eleven point.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we go small. I just want to make sure that it doesn't go smaller.
Oh, no.
So that's easy.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't want to sacrifice, is what I'm, what I'm getting at.
Okay, we have a, I need a motion to approve the bid specifications for the annual report.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Campesano. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, five-zero.
What was the volume on that?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred? Okay.
I was just hoping that you might be able to come up with something that maybe we could get a few more, that's all. I just, I just have a concern.
You know, in the bid specs, we do ask for how much for additional books?
Right now-
Five hundred additional books. So then you can make the decision when the bids come in. How's that? Get one more bite at the apple.
Thank you, Sue. What Phil wants to hear is two hundred and fifty.
I know, but that's-
Okay, you told me you want to get out of here early, did you not?
I'm just saying, what he's saying, I'm just saying what Phil's looking for is.
Uh, next is Blackbrier subdivision.
Yes, in compliance with RSA forty-one fourteen A, please be advised that the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission voted to recommend the acquisition of the open space land. Therefore, we can, the Board can proceed with their two public hearings, and we have sent a notice to newspaper, and those will be on January third and January seventeen.
Okay. Can I just add a comment to that?
You can.
Well, rather than giving it to any reporter, just at this point, since it's the topic of discussion, is the Planning Board said that the, they would recommend the Board of Selectmen read the minutes to get an understanding of where they're coming from on Blackbrier. Of, of last week's meeting, discussion of it.
Last week's Planning Board meeting.
Yeah, on the discussion specifically to Blackbrier.
They're probably not up yet. They're not.
No, but if you read those minutes, I'm understanding, because I brought up some of the issues. I brought up the issue that the planning, that the Board of Selectmen did not feel comfortable, going back with a recommendation to the Planning Board about breaking it out, you know, the line and something like that because the Board of Selectmen's on a land use. And they said that, they had no problem with that, but that's why they gave it to us. And I said, well, they said, have the Board, the Board of Selectmen can read our minutes to understand where.
Okay, sounds fair enough. And lastly, we just got a copy of the year-end encumbrances for our review. And I guess first and foremost, are there any questions on this? I, I think we're going to, just so everyone knows, at, at eight o'clock or maybe perhaps sooner, Parks and Recreation Commission is going to be, come before the Board to review the, their recommendation for the repairs of both Barnard and Roy Pool. And that will impact this encumbrance sheet, which is the last item for pool resurfacing. So, but certainly, you know, so we're not gonna act on it until after. We have to take an official vote until after we hear from Parks and Rec Commission. But are there any questions with regard to any of these lines on the encumbrance sheet? Yes?
On the fence and guardrail for South Mast and East Union, is that associated with the project? The new wall? Is that, is any of that part of the South Mast drainage project, which should be incorporated in the contract prices?
I'm not sure. Would, is that for BII fence? Is that the one you're looking at?
Hmm, yes. It says guardrail on South Mast and East Union. I think I recall-
It sure sounds like it's the same area.
Part of that being on the punch list, guardrail. So I'm just wondering why that would not be included in the actual contract price, why we would be paying separate for that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's not work that the town's doing, that's the worries.
Unless this is a portion that's not included in there, because it might be on East Union Street portion.
Well, I will email Carl and see if he can answer.
David, was it?
David, do you have anything?
Yeah, uh, yeah, DPW has to confirm Nick's concern. I believe that DPW also has a, an outstanding purchase order with a firm called American Fencing, approximately fifteen hundred dollars for a hundred and twenty feet of fencing for the rail trail.
Are they anticipating delivery of that before like mid-January?
It will be installed April, May, and then billed and paid.
Is that company installed?
But they already have a, a purchase order accepted.
They do. I'm not sure why that's not here.
Is that a, is that a grant?
It is a grant, but um-
Doesn't that go over multi-year?
But it doesn't matter for our purposes, we're a calendar year, and we still need to list it. And then we book it as a receivable on the revenue side. The grant can go over a year, but for our accounting purposes, we're in a calendar year.
Wait, I understand that, but does that deplete all of the grant funding?
It leaves forty dollars. We, we did very well, Nick.
No, I, I guess what I'm asking is if there was money left over in that grant, we, we wouldn't issue an encumbrance for it, it would just get carried over, so why couldn't we carry it over?
We don't ask, we don't ask for the reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement grant.
Right.
It's not like they fronted us the money.
And the, let's see, the- And the twenty percent match was from the Park and Rec Impact Fee vote.
Are there any other questions on the encumbrance list? All right, well, we'll, we'll take a formal vote after we hear from Parks and Rec Commission. Next up will be committee reports, and I'll start that one off with the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee met last Tuesday and Wednesday to discuss the school budget. And there were some motions made on Tuesday. Then on Wednesday, Chairman Cludier presented the Board of Selectmen with, I guess, a tax rate impact sheet, to which there were, it was a vote by the, by the Budget Committee to defer further conversations until tomorrow night with regard to the school budget. And it appears as, you know, when I asked, you know, what, you know, what are some, what are the goals of the Budget Committee? There were a couple of members who said that they were looking to level, have a level tax rate, and that was what their, their goal was on the school budget. They didn't really mention, obviously, that probably can't be the case on the town side because we didn't get a level tax rate budget. So I will ask them tomorrow with regard to that. But public, so we're, we're kinda done in terms of the town side, as you know. They will hold their public hearing, I think it's on the twelfth. And from there, they will meet after and determine what number they're going to bring to the deliberative session. So I believe that I'd like to, with the approval of the Board, put this on, put budget on our agenda for January third to discuss the implications of the current position of the Budget Committee, to determine what our course of action may be. And there are, as I see it, you know, three or four different routes to go. One would be that we would accept the Budget Committee's budget in its entirety. The other would be that we would reject the Budget Committee's budget in its entirety. The other would be a, some sort of having a conversation with the Budget Committee or some sort of compromise. And the other issue is, do we want to have any special warrant articles with regard to some of these items that came out of the budget, came out of CIP? Do we want to entertain going that direction? And if, if, if we want to go that route, which articles, which pieces of equipment would we put into those articles, et cetera? So that's food for thought for the next couple of weeks. So if the Board can just, you know, think about how they may want to proceed so we can have a fruitful discussion on the, on the third, that would be, that'd be great. Other than that, that is pretty much it for, you know, for the Budget Committee. Library, I could not attend because I was at the Budget Committee. So I'll turn that over to Selectmen Fornier, who attended the Parks and Rec Commission meeting.
Last Wednesday, the first discussion that came up was Lyons Field. And it's been a lot of discussion regarding the mowing and maintenance of Lyons Field from the Parks and Rec Center. And what it really comes down to is allocations of resources and the amount of time it takes to do it. Parks and Rec doesn't use Lyons Field for their programs, but yet there's always been a part that Lyons, the Lyons Club's been very nice in offering these fields for, you know, for other programs, for high school, et cetera. So the question was coming out, how can we transition out of mowing these lawns? It's not a matter of because the Parks and Rec people don't use it. It's just that we've got so many parks now, and we've been slipping on the maintenance in the, in the, in the playgrounds, et cetera, that they're trying to find a way to take some of that, take, take some of the time that we're spending in those fields and shift it, shift it over to, you know, the playgrounds, et cetera. So that was one of the conversations when they came and like the people from Lyons met. And hopefully, as we go down the road, there'll be discussions with the high school, and hopefully, everyone can come to some type of agreement as how we can transition out, if we do, do transition out. Second piece, there was a lot of discussion regarding the bids on the pool, and I won't go into that in depth because we're gonna see that in a few minutes. And the other issue we spoke about was the Parks and Rec Center itself and regarding the condition it's in. And as you see in, in one of the, some of the money that was encumbered, you, you can see that they're talking about flooring for the Parks and Rec Center. So hopefully, they're gonna try and put a little paint on the walls and take care of some of the flooring. And that's gonna be one of the little projects where this, this winter is trying to up, I don't want to say upgrade, do some very, very needed maintenance within the Parks and Rec building.
Repair work.
Hmm?
Repair work. Repair.
Oh. Are you asking?
No, basically, some repair work.
Yeah, replacement of carpet and, and other repairs, yeah. Anything else? There was some discussion about fees, right?
Well, that's, that's not ready to come forward, and that was, that was tabled, tabled to our next meeting.
Yeah, one, one thing that I, I was remiss last week when Colas Adams was here in public comment during the, the presentation. It was when that revolving fund, I'm not sure if it's revolving fund, when that fund was initiated a couple of years ago, it was made very clear during the Board's discussion as well as to the public that any fees that came into that fund would be for capital expenses, and that would, they would be under the discretion of the Parks and Rec Commission to disperse those. So I think that maybe there needs to be greater communication of that in the future, but it had, it, that's, when that fund was established, it was established to take, to take fee money and to designate it towards improving the capital needs of, of all of our parks.
The, the article, though, was written per statute to allow for either, for capital improvements or for program costs.
Okay.
But I think you're right. It was presented as saving that money, using it as a savings account or expansion of facilities.
And is that it, Steve?
Yeah.
Parks and Rec? And then lastly, oh, we have two more, Conservation?
Conservation met on the seventeenth. Minor business moving a, a view sign up on Mount Honka Nunick. Present location, there is no longer a view there, so it's gonna be moved on the trail. There's just, the years it's been there, trees have grown up. Primary business, they voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen accept the Blackbrier open space property. And then there was also some discussion on the relief process with regards to the wetland surface water conservation district because there's, there's an ordinance that lays out the relief method, which is through the Planning Board, but there have been, there were, particularly, there's a project now under review where the developer is going through the ZBA to get a variance bypassing. So there's, there's gonna be a meeting set up between ZBA, planning, and conservation to see if they can collectively come up with a method of streamlining that. So it's a consistent relief process across the board.
I, I just had one, one question, and I'm not sure if it would be on the administration side or on, on conservation, but is there any way for us to either get a map or some sort of detailed listing as to what, how much of our community is, is, is in now conservation easements or conservation or protected by either wetlands setbacks or surface water setbacks? As I'm, I'm, I'm curious to see, you know, where we're at with, with regard to that. I mean, we had a pretty substantial easement with the Shirley, right, it was Shirley, right?
Mm-hmm, Welsh.
Shirley and Welsh, that was a pretty-
Oh, oh, right, correct.
Significant amount of acreage. And now, but this other open space issue, that's over a hundred acres. So I think, I think the group is making significant progress. I'm just curious to see, and the other thing is-
Do you want that broken out?
Yeah, I think, if I can.
Yeah.
I think, I think you mentioned three items.
Right.
It's pretty different, just so that we have, it's clear.
And then where do we stand, you know, with regard to that? I mean, with regard to other towns. So, you know, do we have, is our community ten percent, twenty percent in conservation? I'm just curious to see what, what balance there is because, you know, I, I've said, I've long said this, that I believe that we have to have a balance of our conservation and, and our industrial, commercial, and our residential. Try to have a good balance there. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we're going in all different directions. Not, I mean, this balance, I should say, not just, you know, only going towards, say, conservation efforts when there may, where maybe we should be looking at other areas in town for commercial and industrial, that type of thing, so. And I'm sure that's in the master plan, and I can look that up. I'm just curious to see, where does that balance now stand with, you know, with these two that are before us?
So that we don't remake maps? Do you, is it important to know what's in open space? Open space is a term used to describe several different things. It's, um, open space, it's owned by development, and then there's open space like Blackbrier that, you know, is proposed that we own.
Well, if it's not going to be developed, right. I'm talking about is that now, there is-
It's a prohibition for development?
Right, yes.
Okay, so all one color for the area prohibited.
Well, it's ever easiest for someone to-
What about like the mountain? We, we own most of the mountains.
Right.
It's either conservation or the other mountain is a water precinct.
Right. Do you want to know the water precinct land that's protected?
I'm talking all land. I mean, I'm just, like I said, it would be interesting, I, I think we should be taking a look at, as our town is growing, are there any, you know, what are the developable parcels that are still out there? And I, and I know that right now, there may not be many, and people of interest, I should say, but I think we have to be cognizant, are there any parcels that are good for future development? You know, we've done a fairly good job of identifying ones to protect prime wetlands and surface water and all the other.
Sue, I recall six or eight months ago, the Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning did a presentation here of a study that did a full build-out of our town.
Yeah. Yeah, something like that would be fine. You don't need to reinvent the wheel.
It may be a good resource in that study.
Please don't reinvent the wheel on this one. I just, whatever we, we have, I can figure it out. It's like, I'm just curious. Okay, it is six-thirty, and I'd like to welcome Lori Davis from the Goffstown Lions Club. And you also have a guest, Jim Hollein, who is also here. So I'd like to invite you up. You can, you can just, if you'd like to, you can stand right above that, right below that microphone that's in the ceiling. Or you can sit down. It's entirely up to you.
As you know, your fire department has been involved doing the firefighter challenge with Mountain View Middle School for the last four years, and they've allowed the Lions to be a part of it. and they've allowed the Lions to be a part of it. And we thought it was time that they get the recognition that they so richly deserve because not only does your department use their equipment and their time to help teach the children about what's going on, they took a step this year where they actually designed tasks for these kids to operate as teams, to build their own fire brigade bucket and to operate in a fire brigade to learn as teams because that's how your fire department operates. And they're developing a much more educational approach to this, which is wonderful and we get to be a part of it. But the other thing is they have a tremendous outpouring of help from your fire department, both your full-time firefighters that donate a lot of time to it, but also your call firefighters who donate their time and charge nothing to help us during that day. They are absolutely outstanding. They're there for the whole day so that if they go out and the people who are on call actually have to go on a call, we have backups. Because while the Lions like to help out, let's face it, we're not all that young to go running and charging around with the eighth graders. So we would have had this made up a plaque and each year we will have a date added to it for the four years that the fire department has allowed us to participate for their excellence and dedication to reaching out to the communicate, community with this challenge. And we'd like them to have that recognition. Chief O'Brien?
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the, uh, the Lions Club and the, the Govstown Fire, Firefighter Association with that help because again, Deputy Hurley created the program over three years ago. And with the help of the Mountain View Middle School, uh, what we do is we task the eighth graders, uh, in this firefighter challenge. And not only is it a physical event, but it's also an academic event where they learn a bit about what we do and they learn a bit about fire prevention. And with Lieutenant Connor, he spins into the, the most current fire prevention topics that are out there. And it's a great cooperative effort between the Lions Club, our firefighters, our call firefighters. We, everybody does a great job and it's, it's a great day. And, um, it's simply, we have parents coming by, we've got other groups coming by, the students have a great time. We have a huge, huge group of students go through, almost 200 students. I think this past year we had over 200 students, uh, participate. And, uh, it, it's amazing how we can get this all done and wrapped up in, mostly in a day. Uh, but they also do essays, they also do creative events and, uh, the kids have a blast. And it's a great, great way for the, uh, the students to get, to get a little glimpse of what we do and what the fire department's all about. And, uh, for weeks afterwards, we're always getting, you know, hey, there's the fire department. And that's, that's great for our guys and that's why we do it. And again, I commend the Lions Club for, for hard, hard work and support.
Thank you very much.
If Deputy Hurley would come up, please. Mark is instrumental in this whole program. He dealt with it and hooks it and he brought it here. It's taken him quite a few years to bring it to fruition, but it is his baby. And when he's out there, he is running with every youngster, Steve Tower is and a couple other people, spell those two. But Mark is running and I mean, running. Your fire department's very physically fit. It was interesting because we had two adults go through it this year and the eighth graders kicked their toes. It was just fascinating. But Mark has put so much of himself in it, the fire department. It is up to him to take care of everything from start to finish. He has known that the Lions wanted to see education. They've delivered that the schools worked beautifully with it. What was really fascinating this year, each year it gets better, is we had lunch with the kids and they actually talked to us about the upcoming challenge. They had questions about it. Afterwards, they were impressed at the physicalness of what the firefighters actually have to do, that the hoses aren't heavy, are heavy. It's not like waving your garden hose around, that the coats are not just throw coat on and off you go. There's a lot more to being a fireman than driving the truck. And it's, it's nice to see that your fire department has taken such an interest in your community, but we really would like to say thank you to Mark because without him, the firefighter challenge would have never come to fruition.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the board for, for helping us do a program like this. And again, that's what's great about having cooperative effort with, with the Lions Club is it really doesn't cost us much other than, uh, the hard work that, that our staff does. And, um, with the Lions Club, we're able to, uh, get some nice awards to the students and, and other, other prizes that are out there. So, thank you.
And next year, any selectmen that would like to come?
Well, I think Selectman Fornier is training, um, so it's very possible that, um, I think he's three to four miles in the treadmill now. So it is possible that he could attempt this, uh, next year.
And Nick should be ready for it.
Yeah. Immediately behind Selectman Gross.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
All right. Next is we have a committee report from the Planning Board.
Sure. The Planning Board, um, dealt with a request, uh, it was site plan amendment for hours of operation for the Planet Fitness. And they approved, uh, 24-hour operation, uh, with the exception of Saturday and Sunday hours remaining from seven to seven. And, uh, another item that they did was, there was a lot, uh, was a basic lot line adjustment that Don Dubal, uh, presented. And it was a pretty straightforward one and that went through, uh, with some conditions. And they also gave conceptual comments to, uh, applicant, applicant regarding, uh, parking for a request to restore the assembly usage to the, uh, the former Methodist Church on North Mash Grove.
Yeah.
Parking is, uh, an issue because there isn't much property. And basically the Planning Board said that they would prefer to see, uh, not see them dig up, uh, green grass and replace it with asphalt to get a few parking spaces so that, uh, they could work with staff and public works to, uh, come up with, uh, some parking there. And, uh, thought that their proximity to some of the, um, the public spaces, public parking spaces and the timing of its use, uh, should be able to be worked out and should not be an issue. They also, um, vacated their decision from, uh, November 18th regarding the Harvest Christian Church and they agreed to reconsider the matter on January 13th in a fully, uh, notice public hearing. And also Jack Munn from Southern New Hampshire Planning, uh, had come, he'd been in a few times, uh, presenting, uh, proposed source water protection plan. And there was a zoning ordinance in there and, um, it's, it's, uh, been withdrawn as an item to go, uh, on the ballot at this point for some, uh, further work and some further re, uh, examination. And we'll just go over a few issues and, uh, take a look at it again and see where that's going.
All right.
And of course, there was the Blackbriar issue that I spoke about before, just so that.
All right. Now is a good time for us to, I think Selectman Fornier, you had some old business, which was with regard to some of these, uh, structures that are on the mountain. You had mentioned that, if you want to just elaborate on.
Yeah, I'm looking as far as where we are status-wise with that. I mean, the process has seemed to have been a long time to take down three camps, I'm going to call them.
Yes, um, our building inspector had gotten some estimated costs for the removal I had told you about. But when I looked at those costs, they did not include the disposal of any asbestos that may be on site, nor did we have the funds to test for the asbestos. I sent that material to Carl because it used to be Tom Patrick that used to coordinate that testing of asbestos and asked him to look into that. But with holidays and vacations being as they are, I'm sure I'll hear back after the first year from Carl. This was a project that we decided probably to do in-house, but there will still be that asbestos removal cost. If there is asbestos, which I assume there would be those, um, probably not on the trolley, but maybe on the structure around it. And then the, um, that shack may have asbestos in the roof. So it's not something you just put in the dumpster. It has to be removed properly.
Okay, question to that. So, uh, when they go out and look at it, um, and let's just say we talk asbestos, someone's going to be going through this, how long does it take them once they actually visit the site and to get back to us?
Not long, within a week they usually get back to us.
Within a week. And they're going to designate all portions that they think are hazardous waste?
Right. Then they give us an estimate on the cost of removing that.
All right, because my other question with that would be, is that whenever we do permits, et cetera, for regular housing and people, because you see people remove these structures all the time. What process do they go through with?
They have to come into the building department and, um, apply for demolition permit. And one of the questions is, is there any asbestos on the property and have you have tested for that? So we're going through the same process as any property owner we go through.
All right. Is there anything else? Any other new business? All right, um, I think what we're going to do is we're going to, um, I have.
I have one on non-public and illegal.
Okay, and I have one under, I have two under persons affecting with reputation of someone other than the board. So we'll go, we can first go under, uh, legal. And so we need a motion to go into R. St. 91 dash A colon three, uh, Roman numeral two, legal is what, E?
E's legal.
E. Okay, do I have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, now, so everyone kind of knows, we're, um, we're going to go into non-public session. The Parks and Rec Commission is meeting at seven o'clock and they are making a final recommendation on their bids for, um, the pool resurfacing of, of Roy and Barnard Park, which was scheduled for eight o'clock. So, uh, I think what we'll do here is we're going to reconvene hopefully at around 7:30. If not, you know, we will definitely come back here at 7:30. And if for some reason Andrew, we are not ready, Parks and Rec is not ready, then we'll at least give those who are watching more notice as to when we will reconvene in public session. So that is the update for, for those in the audience, so. All right, so we will go into, uh, we'll go next door for.
It doesn't have to be, uh, good.
Okay. All right, we're, we're back on from a, from a recess. I'd like to welcome Rick Wohlhemmey, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation. And the purpose of our meeting with you tonight, Rick, is to go over the pool replacement bids that, that were opened up last week, and then to discuss the recommendations of the Parks and Rec Commission with regard to fixing the two pools at Barnard and Roy Park respectively.
The company that Park and Recreation Commissioners have selected is a company by the name of Reno System Corporation out of Indianapolis, Indiana. This, it's a, it's a process, it's a PVC membrane process that will basically encase the entire pool. They're doing both pools, you know, but it's a package deal the way the company wrote it up. It's fifty-eight thousand, four oh eight, forty-five.
Please, repeat that, please, sorry.
Fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and forty-five cents.
Forty-five cents?
They put that, they put that, so.
They put that in there.
Yes, they did.
That's a pretty accurate quote, huh?
You can tell they sharpen their pencils.
And, um, yeah, does, are there any warranties on this Reno system?
This is a ten-year warranty on the system?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen-year warranty?
Fifteen-year warranty on the material?
On the, on the labor, on the, yes, on the material.
On the material itself, okay.
Is there a labor warranty for, for, for a specific time, or?
That covers, the, the warranty covers their seams, you know, if they have any workmanship errors, things like that.
Were there other options? Were there other options that you received?
There was quite, yep, some other options were much more expensive, more gunite type of systems. We had one gentleman looking to come in and actually pour a six-inch, for the Roy Park pool, to actually come in and put six inches of gunite over the bottom of the pool to correct this cracks and things like that. He was like a hundred and twenty-three thousand. We had another company, another plaster slash gunite at a hundred and eighty-five thousand. We had a third gunite type of system at a hundred and sixty-five thousand. We also had a fourth gunite system too, which was at seventy-three five.
Do we have a time, if, if we were to select this and we were to proceed forward, what would be the timeframe?
Um, actually, if, if you don't mind, can I call somebody up here?
Yeah, sure.
Can I do a shout-out?
Yeah.
Kevin Baines, please.
Does that phone a friend?
Cash cab, when I'm in the cash cab.
So, so, so Kevin.
I'm sorry.
Not that people get that, but it's a show on what, uh...
Everyone knows cash cab.
So Kevin, you, you looked into these different companies?
Yeah, I had actually, I had called both the, the two low bidders, which had, were offering a PVC membrane system. I had called all of their references, talked to most of them, really got great references for both companies, really just wanted to talk to the people about how they liked the system. You know, it was something different than what we were originally looking for, but it seemed like a viable alternative, so overwhelmingly, the customers that I talked to loved it. They really loved it. They loved the ability to maintain it, clean it. It was safer for the children. There was no scuffed knees, stubbed toes, things like that on the, on the rougher surface, so. And one of the customers actually not only did it in their pool, they did their pool deck in the vinyl as well, so it was very well received from the references I spoke to.
Were these commercial applications, municipal pools?
Uh, both. Some of them were apartment complexes, YMCA camps, and some municipal pools.
In winter weather, cold winters?
Uh, yes, I actually, one of them was from Oklahoma, which has temperature ranges from zero to a hundred. One was Ohio. There was one I spoke to in Salem, Mass., and there was a couple in New York, so it was a pretty good cross-reference of climates.
Question?
Yes, go.
The ones in New York, do you recall what town, what city?
I'd have to...
Were they north?
Yeah, one of, I think, well, one of them was on Long Island, I thought, right?
I'd have to look.
The reason, the reason I'm asking, I'm just asking for a comparison of the frost depth.
Okay.
Frost depth in Long Island is not as deep as it is here.
It was an Atari, Rick.
Oh, okay.
That had...
It doesn't have to be, uh, good.
Okay.
All right, we're back on from a recess. I'd like to welcome Rick Welhelmy, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation. And the purpose of our meeting with you tonight, Rick, is to go over the pool replacement bids that were opened up last week, and then to discuss the recommendations of the Parks and Rec Commission with regard to fixing the two pools at Barnard and Roy Park respectively. Turn it over to you.
The company that Parks and Recreation Commissioners have selected is a company by the name of Reno System Corporation, out of Indianapolis, Indiana. It's a process, it's a PVC membrane process that will basically encase the entire pool. They're doing both pools, you know, but it's a package deal, the way the company wrote it up. It's fifty-eight thousand, four oh eight, forty-five.
Please, repeat that, please, sorry.
Fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and forty-five cents.
Forty-five cents.
They put that, they put that, so.
They put that in there. That's a pretty accurate quote, huh?
You can tell they sharpen their pencils.
And, um, does, are there any warranties on this Reno system?
Yes, this, this is a ten-year warranty on the system?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen-year warranty?
Fifteen-year warranty on the material?
On the, on the labor, on the, yes, on the material.
On the material itself, okay.
Is there a labor warranty for, for a specific time, or?
That covers, the warranty covers their seams, you know, if they have any workmanship errors, things like that.
Were there other options? Were there other options that you received?
There was quite, yep, some other options were much more expensive, more gunite type of systems. We had one gentleman looking to come in and actually pour a six-inch, for the Roy Park pool, to actually come in and put six inches of gunite over the bottom of the pool, to correct this cracks and things like that. He was like a hundred and twenty-three thousand. We had another company, another plaster slash gunite at a hundred and eighty-five thousand. We had a third gunite type of system at a hundred and sixty-five thousand. We also had a fourth gunite system too, which was at seventy-three five.
Do we have a time, if we were to select this and we were to proceed forward, what would be the timeframe?
Um, actually, if you don't mind, can I call somebody up here?
Yeah, sure.
Can I do a shout-out?
Yeah.
Kevin Baines, please.
Does that phone a friend?
Cash cab, when I'm in the cash cab. So, so, so Kevin.
I'm sorry.
Not that people get that, but it's a show on what, uh.
Everyone knows cash cab.
So Kevin, you looked into these different companies?
Yeah, I had actually, I had called both the, the two low bidders, which were offering a PVC membrane system. I had called all of their references, talked to most of them. Really got great references for both companies, really just wanted to talk to the people about how they liked the system. You know, it was something different than what we were originally looking for, but it seemed like a viable alternative, so. Overwhelmingly, the customers that I talked to loved it. They really loved it. They loved the ability to maintain it, clean it. It was safer for the children, there was no scuffed knees, stubbed toes, things like that on the, on the rougher surface, so. And one of the customers actually not only did it in their pool, they did their pool deck in the vinyl as well, so. It was very well received from the references I spoke to.
Were these commercial applications, municipal pools?
Uh, both. Some of them were apartment complexes, YMCA camps, and some municipal pools.
In winter weather, cold winters?
Uh, yes, I actually, one of them was from Oklahoma, which has temperature ranges from zero to a hundred. Uh, one was Ohio, there was one I spoke to in Salem, Mass, and there was a couple in New York, so. It was a pretty good cross-reference of climates.
Question? The ones in New York, do you recall what town, what city?
I'd have to.
Was it north?
Yeah, one of, I think, well, one of them was on Long Island, I thought, right?
The reason, the reason I'm asking, I'm just asking for a comparison of the frost depth.
Okay.
Frost depth in Long Island is not as deep as it is here. That's my.
It was on Atari, Rick.
Oh, okay.
That had the, the two New York ones. One was Gilderland.
That's upstate New York.
New York?
Near Albany.
Yeah.
And, um.
Oklahoma, Massa.
Massapequa.
Massapequa, New York.
Yeah, Massapequa.
Yeah.
And Gilderlinville.
That's Albany area.
Going back to the question, timeframe, if they were.
Um, I didn't have any conversation with them on timeframe, but obviously, they see the need that we have there. I would think there was, could be some negotiations through the contract process. You know, that it would be contingent upon completion during a certain timeframe.
Um, they did have, let the time, once they were to proceed?
They did not give any timeframes, and I, when I did my references, I didn't speak to anyone in particular from either company. I was just mainly checking references.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a one-week process, a two-week process, or, no idea?
No idea.
Yeah, nope, I didn't really talk about that. When I talked to them, they, I said, you know, we need to have them open by, you know, June, June eighteenth. That's when they have to be open, that's when we get going, and they all, of course, they said, yeah, we can get that done.
It's certainly a shorter process than the gunite quotes that we received.
And you, what, you picked colors too, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Designer.
So this is what you see at all of these water parks, right? It's these membranes?
Yes.
Yes. What is the company name again?
Atari?
Reno?
Uh, the one note that we were going with was Reno Systems, R-E-N-O, capital S, Y-S Corporation.
And I might add, a lot of the references that I spoke to had similar structural issues that we have. You know, similar issues to what we're experiencing in both of our pools, as far as the cracking, some water loss, a little bit of upheaval, and things of that nature, so it seemed to be a good fit for them as well.
Yes, well, looks like.
Is there going to have to be a different process for winterization than the current, what's there currently now? And I'm, I guess, I'm asking that question to see if we need to do, what we need to do to prep these to get through the winter, and is there a budget impact?
Is, the questions that I found out about that, no. I mean, you can just drain it, you know, below the skim line, get it below the skim line, leave the water in there, and then from there, you do the same process. You're gonna clean it out the same way you would clean out a gunite pool.
Okay, so the snow and rain between the time you drain it and the time later on, that just accumulates into, do you have to come in, so you, we don't need to put a cover on it, like you close the pool up?
You're gonna have to power wash it every year.
No, I understand, okay, so that's one item, that's one thing that's different.
But then, but then with a gunite pool, you gotta paint it almost every year.
Okay, so, okay.
So you do have some, you're gonna have some less maintenance, you're gonna have a cleaning process no matter what.
Right.
So you're gonna have to still come in and do a, you know, a power wash, even in your gunite system right now, you gotta power wash, you stained your algae leaves, colors, and stuff like that off. So you're gonna do a similar thing, but you won't have to do the painting process.
Okay, I guess the reason why I'm asking that without a cover, the only concern, and, and, I mean, you know, we get a lot of wind, branches and stuff going in there, I guess that's the only concern. So I guess that's all gonna have to be inspected in the spring.
Right.
Just, just so that we're aware of what the, the new, what we're gonna be going through, you know, the difference.
All right, we'll send them on back this way now. You wanna see this?
No, I didn't see that one.
One of the references I spoke to also mentioned that they were actually using less chemicals, you know, because they didn't have the leaching of the, the concrete gunite, the minerals, leaching into the water, messing with the pH in the water, so they actually found that having a more of a neutral boundary in their, in their pool, that they were using less chemicals for maintenance.
All right, anything else? I think that's it.
A motion to ward.
So.
You have a motion to ward to Reno Sys- Systems. In the amount of fifty-eight, four oh eight, forty-five. It was made by Selectman DeVanz. Is there a second?
No, second, man.
Second, that, Selectman Fornier. Any further discussion, questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 There was, um. When you did your budget presentation, you had mentioned to, you had, in your presentation, you talked about pumps.
Yes.
That were needing replacement, and diving boards, and, you know, what, where does that all stand? I mean, this has come in, we had, we had set aside eighty thousand dollars for the repair of these two pools. Where do you stand with regard to that, with these?
With the.
To your budget?
With the future, the way that we're looking at with the budget scenarios that we are at, we could use some help to, if we could utilize what you're talking about, I think, is applying some of those monies towards a, the pump and a diving board.
Do you have any pricing at all on that?
Diving board, I have eighty-nine, eighty-nine hundred, eighty-nine ninety-nine.
Not much, huh?
Well, it's, what you're doing is replacing the same thing, same system that you have, you know, the metal, it has to have the.
Has to be anchored in and all.
The post, center post anchored down. Anything else with me, but it's very simple.
It's the whole shebang, it's not.
Pipes and everything else.
So it's not just the board, it's the.
Oh, no, 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 that, that whole unit's gone.
Right, okay.
That whole unit is rotted.
It's every, the entire, entire thing.
And that's what shut it down, basically, was the rot, the metal rot on the stairs climbing up, so. And then the, the units that hold the actual board in place, those are rotted too, so the whole board kinda travels as it, as you get vibration.
What were the pumps, what were those estimated at?
Total, they were about seventy-eight hundred bucks. Yes.
For both pumps?
Yes.
And the, and the other amount was for two diving boards or one diving?
And wasn't there something lifeguard, wasn't there like, we were used to sitting on a resin chair, something like that?
Lifeguard stands. Yes, lifeguards, uh, chairs.
Right.
Lifeguard chairs. Those are, the chairs alone, for four chairs, is about twenty-eight hundred bucks. Twenty, twenty-eight hundred bucks for four chairs.
How many diving boards do we?
Just one. We can only have one. We only have one pool that is, that can take a diving board legitimately, legally.
If you don't mind, Rick, please tell them what the lifeguards were using at the end, because their lifeguard stands weren't safety.
The chairs, the plastic chairs?
Chairs.
Yeah, I think, I think they know that.
Right, yeah. Yes, Nick? Just as a point, this, this was a proposal that we went out to bid on, and we're awarding that, but all these other encumbrances have purchase orders already issued for them. We're not encumbering money that, we're not just encumbering money with this tonight. If that makes sense.
We're rewarding the bid. Next list will be to encumber one.
This list is not final.
Correct.
This list isn't final.
Right, but I'm saying, we can't add thirty thousand dollars to buy equipment.
Yes, you can.
From who?
You could enter into a contract with any of these companies to do that.
But we don't currently have, okay, that's, that's not the, usually, when we vote on these encumbrances, these are items that we've already issued purchase orders, or we already have contracts for. We don't just encumber money, have money to.
Right, but I guess what I'm trying to say is.
That's my point.
Right, and arguably, you could enter into a contract with any of those companies for the, for the pool pump replacements, or a diving board replacement, or.
Which, the pool resurfacing companies?
No, no, I mean, the companies that would install a diving board, you could enter into a contract with them prior to the end of this year.
This is your last meeting of the year?
This would be, right.
And, and we don't have any kind of agreements for any of these, right, other items?
No, 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 zero.
And I'm not saying they're not.
And those are estimates.
It's a process question.
Publicly saying it's estimates.
Yeah, I'd like to step back a second there, too, is that, you know, like, like, like any bid, this is an estimate for, for these pool repairs. It, this, this number can change, honestly, like it would be with a road program or a cert gods, we've already found out.
But any overage would come out of next year's budget?
This is not a contract price?
Yeah, you're awarding it for this price.
It's a contract.
We're awarding.
I understand it, but I guess what I'm saying, and I guess I'm gonna look at this every time I've dealt with a contractor, that there are sometimes, there are things that are unforeseen that come up within the job. If anyone's had a, you know, a carpenter at their house, or a plumber, I, you know, the reality is that there are unforeseen, unforeseen issues that come up, and I think we should consider that in this process right today, probably.
So the, I mean, the other thing that I'm, that I'm looking at is, there is an opportunity here, and I'm trying to remember what was in your budget for next year, in terms of the lifeguard.
I think it got, if I recall correctly, the pool operation line was almost fully funded. So, which would mean you had lifeguard chairs in there.
Okay, and the, and the pumps?
The pumps would be in there too.
And diving board?
No.
Rick, was that part of, was any of part of that cut by the budget committee?
That's what I'm, what I'm going with is the, the. Budget B from Budget Committee, the twenty-seven thousand dollars, I believe, is still fully funded.
My point is.
But it does not include a diving board.
It really, it's, it's, it's one way, or doing it another way, I mean, one way is doing it out of this year's budget funds, or it's neck, and then you can reduce next year's budget for Parks and Rec, because you're encumbering your, your funds.
Any high attack coming in there?
No, in that pool operation line. Because you, if you're, if you're buying everything this year, you're under contract to buy it, then you don't need it next year.
Yes, I guess you could do that.
What does the board want, wish to proceed?
Could you use it elsewhere? Absolutely.
I'm not clear on what you're asking. It appears, there's two issues. One, it appears from what Rick said, that the, the lifeguard chairs and the pumps are included in next year's budget. The diving board is not.
Okay.
Okay, so there's, you know, if we wanted to address the diving board, there would remain the possibility that that money could be encumbered under this year's budget, and Rick would have to. How are we encumbering it, though? You have an amount of money. We don't have a purchase order. He would get a purchase order. But we're encumbering now. I mean, if that's the case, why don't we go through all the departments and take out some extra money, because all of their budgets were cut next year? So we'll give them each an amount that they could encumber.
Well, that's sarcastic, but.
Well, I'm just saying, but that's the process. We, we, we vote on, and I'm not diminishing anything that your department needs, but there's a process here. We have a, a list of encumbrances. So that's what we're voting on. We, we can't just take an amount and say we're gonna encumber X number of dollars. But if, if Parks and Rec said tonight that we'd like to encumber seventy, or whatever it is, if I add up, ten thousand, and.
He doesn't have a purchase order.
What?
He doesn't have a purchase order for the.
And there's a purchase order for all of these things?
He hasn't gone out to bid for the diving board?
Correct.
How many suppliers are there diving boards, or is it sold source?
I just went online and I looked up for one thing for right now, just to get a number, to get a ballpark number of what it is. I did not go into detail going line by line, starting bid processes.
No, no, that wasn't my question. My question was as far as a diving board for that, for our pool.
Yeah.
Is there, is it a sold source, or as far as you're concerned, as far as you know, it is not a sold source, that there are multi-sources for the diving board?
There might be a few companies out there that provide something like that, I would assume.
So you have not had a conversation with a specific company?
No, I haven't. If next year's budget's not sufficient for the diving board, we go for one season without a diving board?
Is that how the board, how, how the board wanna proceed?
I, I believe the process that we're trying to go forward with here is, in, in what's happening, we're running into the difficulty of going into another year, another year's budget, was that we were trying to put the pools in a condition that, a condition that they were probably, you know, ten years ago. In other words, have, have functioning as they were before, that honestly, that the pools are leaking water, they're, they're in constant maintenance of painting, et cetera. We've had, we have lifeguard stands that are missing, we have, literally, you would see the pipes coming up for the boards, and you have, yep, I think we had yellow police tape around one of them, I think it was at Roy.
Caution tape?
Believe us what we had, is that correct?
Caution tape around the diving board.
Around, around the diving boards, yeah. So you follow, in other words, so one might take, if we take a step back.
They used it all last year.
And we, if.
Shut it down.
Yeah, they weren't using it, but the brackets are there, you're seeing yellow caution tape, and so if we take a step back, we're saying, hey, we're trying to go forward to revitalize them, we're gonna recondition the pools, and we're, there's gonna be some manpower, it's definitely spent within the buildings themselves to upgrade them. Let me phrase, upgrade them, bring them back to where they were, you saw the bathrooms, et cetera. And it kinda looks, I mean, you do all that, and all of a sudden, you're still gonna have these rusted pipes coming out of the ground with yellow caution tape around them. I think there's a part we gotta look at and say for the.
Remove the stand.
I, I think there's a part where you look at it.
We've, we've achieved the aim of resurfacing the pool and the stands.
And I'm saying, I would like to, I, I'm saying, I thought the, the process going forward with the pools, wasn't just the idea of resurfacing the pool, was taking care of the pool area in generals, where I'm at.
Does have Selectman DeVanz up?
No, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, Steve, and I think that was all of our intention. And I think that the main issue, the biggest issue that we were facing was the pools themselves. The repair of the pools, stopping the leaking, that, that was the big number that we were concerned. And I think Rick and Parks and Rec did a good job on, with that. I mean, we saw the range, I mean, even beyond the money that we have to be able to work with on it, and I think that we have something that is workable, I think that looks like it's gonna suffice, and it should last quite a bit. I mean, the issue of the diving board, obviously, was not the top of their priority. The pools were. And it's not something, I mean, we do have a process, we do have a process that we do need to follow, you know, for this. If he had a little bit more information, as, if he had a specific company that he dealt with, and he had somebody, and he had a number, I mean, we could, we could make a motion subject to him, that number being legit, you know, the number, provided he comes up with a purchase order, you know, and gives that to finance by the end of the year. But I don't think, what I, what I heard in my questioning was that he never, he didn't get to that process. And I, obviously, I mean, the, the issue was the pools, and that, that's, that was the main focus. So, I mean, unless we can deal with that portion of the process of how we're gonna do that, I don't see how we could.
And you wouldn't have time to go through the process, right, Rick? You'd have to go out for bid for that amount.
Why does he have to go out to bid?
Well, anything over.
Why ask if it was a sold source?
As if there's competitors. How much is it?
I think it's two thousand dollars for us, three thousand something. I think it's three thousand dollars, anything three thousand and over, we have to, by the purchasing policy, we have to go out to bid.
Cause it's not sold source.
Yes, to go back to what you were saying, we do, I do have bids right now on the lifeguard chairs, for four lifeguard chairs. That we could get done right now, ASAP tomorrow, I can bring that over. With that, you know, I don't wanna be a squeaky wheel, and, and kinda go, I understand your process, and I understand what it is, but.
And the pumps, you don't have any on that?
No, no, that's gonna take more.
I'll just, you know, you know, lay out my, my take on this, is there's an opportunity here to get these pools and the surrounding area done next year. We did set aside money in the budget for the lifeguard stands and the pumps for next year. This would be the opportunity, rather than dragging out the life, the diving board for who knows what, what, what time. We have a very competitive bid to reline these pools, and it would be my druthers to simply finish the process with our pools to make them, to complete the project. And then the work that Parks and Rec has talked about in terms of buying supplies, having volunteers upgrade the pavilion, and the bathhouse, and the toilets, and it would be, next year, it would be a renovation project done, completed, as opposed to doing it in, in pieces, and I don't, I don't think that a ten thousand dollar expense. expense, you know, to complete the whole operation is earth-shattering in my, if everybody feels comfortable about the process, then, then perhaps Selectman DeVanz's suggestion of making a motion contingent upon, you know, checking into a couple of different companies, you know, would, would suffice. That's just my take. You wanted us, oh, go off the phone.
No, I, I, I think we're pretty much, from what I gather, we're all in agreement. I mean, it's, you know, a process issue. The money is in the budget for the chairs, and the money is in the budget for the pumps. I mean, and there's a process that we go through, and if we were to do anything at this point, to try to do something with that, it would, it, I'm not comfortable with that because there's a process, and that, that's the process that we've been following. That the, the diving board is not something that, 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 that's been in the budget. We haven't put that in the two thousand and eleven budget on, on that issue. I mean, and I think we're fortunate that the bids came in under the money that, that we had set aside for it. Do you think ten thousand dollars is enough to cover a diving board?
I would say yes. I mean, first look at it, eighty-nine, I mean, that's if I just went to that one company, it was eighty-nine, ninety-nine.
Well, you're gonna have to go through whatever process you're gonna have to when you look at this. I mean, it's very possible you may find that for some reason or other with this, and I don't know, I'm just saying, you might find that for some reason or other with this new liner system, that the other type of pool, you can only use a certain type of diving wood, and I don't know, I'm just saying. So, I mean, if you think that ten thousand dollars is sufficient, and we made a motion subject to you going through the process by the end of the year, and anything different didn't get, you know, you only put whatever you got for a PO, and whatever you didn't have is gonna have to go back into the general fund with the balance of, of the money. I mean, if, if everybody agrees with that, that might be one way of doing it.
You want?
I just wanna say, I, I agree with Phil. I, I think it's an, it's an opportunity to finally, you know, finish a project. I hate, you know, I hate these, these small, little items that we leave out and we carry it year after year after year. I mean, this is a situation where these projects can be done, completed, the community can enjoy it, and, and we move forward.
I, I, I understand, and I wish it was that easy, but we do have processes and statutes that we have to follow.
And I think that's the, that's the important thing. We're operating under the statute, the state statute that allows us to encumber, and it states we have to have legal obligation to pay something in order to encumber it. And tonight, we have no legal obligation to pay, something that we haven't even decided where we went by something. And my point was, is that there still is the opportunity for the director to have a legal obligation prior to the end of the year. It's just a matter of the, if the will of the board wants to give him that opportunity to do it.
Well, if I can just add, I, as one-fifth of this board, have no problem having a special meeting by the end of the year. If he came up with these, to have a special meeting to deal with that encumbrance, if that's what the board wants to do, unless we make a motion that it's subject to it, whichever way, I think either way will fulfill, will fulfill the statutory obligation, and whatever the will of the board is. I have no problem coming here anytime between Christmas and New Year's.
Is there an alternate way to fund this next year, Rick, through your revolving fund?
I would say, to answer that correctly, no, because I'm not really sure where that's going. If I had a really good, hundred percent clear vision of how that's gonna be and where it's gonna be, I'd have a better response to that.
All right, I'm personally comfortable with a contingent-type motion, rather than coming back. Uh, but that's just, I'm now comfortable with what you said, whether we come back, or whether we do a contingent motion. I'm comfortable with the contingent motion, that provided that the director can come, uh, by the end of the year with a PO for that, for that diving board to include it.
And it follows whatever process he has in, it's acceptable to finance.
So are you waiving the purchasing policy process? Because I just heard that he can't go through, he doesn't have time to go through the purchasing policy.
Fine, we'll waive the purchasing process. Is there a motion? Come on. Either this, either this succeeds or it fails, it, I'm, I'm fine, but it's getting belabored.
I'll make the motion. I'll let you word it for me. Waive the, waive the purchasing process, process, go forward with the diving board, and-
Contingent upon the director's PO by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
With no.
With no bid. Right, he said waive the purchase-
Oh, I'm sorry, correct.
Right.
Up to, how much?
Up to ten thousand. Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
What is the motion?
Wanna read it back, Catherine?
Motion to waive the purchasing process to obtain the diving boards, and then you added, provided that the director can come up with a PO by the end of the year.
PO.
Was that a plural, diving boards?
Board.
Diving board.
Board.
Okay, I heard an S there.
We're only going one.
Under ten thousand.
Right. Still doesn't solve the encumbrance, because how do you?
You still have to vote on an encumbrance.
You have to have a contract to vote on the encumbrance. But you're not gonna pay for it till next year. So I have a contract on this lacrosse and hockey supplies too, or? No, we have purchase orders, which is a legal- Right, so if he gets a purchase order in by that time, why is that any different than the hockey and lacrosse supplies? Because we're voting on this. We're not voting on that. So then we'll come back and vote.
I don't have a problem coming back before Christmas or New Year's.
Well, that's, was, this, that was the best suggestion five minutes ago.
I have no problem. We do what we gotta do.
Fine.
Most important thing to do is get the pool ready for the spring.
Waive the purchasing limit tonight, and let Mr. Wilhamey do his job, and we'll schedule a meeting.
I think, I think the reality of it is, is that you're gonna call up as many vendors as you can, and you're gonna get the best price you possibly can anyway. So whether or not they bid on it, or whether or not you're shopping around at different stores, you're gonna try to get the best price anyway. So I don't, I'm not so worried about the purchasing policy portion of it.
I just add one other thing, too. I mean, we're fortunate here that we got a bid and we accepted a bid that's below the amount of money that we had, because we might be looking at a bid that was seventy-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, okay? The bid came in low enough that we can afford a diving board and still have some money to go back to the general fund. So I think this is really a win-win situation, and that's the only reason.
Right, and, and if I also may remind folks that this was money that was previously eighty thousand dollars earmarked for sidewalks, which would have gone to sidewalks, but we were trying to address the situation of the pools which were in dire need of repair. So I think that good managers do shuffle things around and to try to meet the needs of, of the community, and that's why I think we shifted the money from sidewalks there. It also will lessen the impact in future years, in a future budget of having to budget for this diving board. It's gonna, it has to get done eventually, and it's, uh, the other issue is that it, to some degree, it's a liability hazard. When you, every time you put caution tape around something, that's a liability, and I don't think we should, you know, lose track of that, and, you know, we've had instances at the pool where we've had some problems, and this is one way to solve a liability issue as well. So we'll schedule a meeting and we'll, we'll put it to a vote.
Are you gonna take your vote on the motion?
No. It's withdrawn.
You will withdraw your motion?
Well, actually, we'll, we'll change it to, uh, just to simply waive the purchasing policy. Uh, I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion to allow, waive the purchasing policy and allow the Parks and Rec director to secure a competitive price for a diving board for the Barnard pool up to ten thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman Fornier. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
It's four one. We'll meet Saturday?
On encumbrances?
No. It's fine with me.
Sunday, Sunday morning's even better.
I don't see what's this special.
Seven-thirty Sunday morning.
You shouldn't be laughing, you're coming with us on Sunday morning. Oh, she gets it, yeah.
Monday, is this Monday, bring us back Monday?
Sunday.
Sunday?
No. Uh, let's do this.
We can't even agree on that.
Let's do this. Just give you as much time as, as possible. How about next Thursday?
Wait a minute, Thursday morning?
We'll do any time, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, I just give some-
Morning.
Yeah.
Thursday morning.
I, I don't care how early it is.
Seven-thirty in the morning.
I'm not coming Thursday night.
Uh, that would be the-
Twenty-third?
That would be the-
Twenty-third?
No.
Thirty.
Thirtieth.
Oh.
December thirtieth, seven-thirty, seven-thirty in the morning.
Seven AM.
Seven-thir, you wanna go seven AM? We can go seven AM.
I won't be here, seven AM.
Seven-thirty it is then, seven-thirty.
It'll be four a.m.
Going once, going twice.
All the commissioners should be there as well.
Proceed your question to, and-
Yes, we'll take a vote on this.
The action, the action will be then vote on this list.
Correct.
Which would be a different, what we're looking at.
You're gonna have a different number, which you, did you total that up?
Yeah, one million, three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-two cents. Does not include the diving board.
Right. We also get the-
But includes the Reno system.
We get the information on the guardrails? And the American fencing. Do you have a purchase order for that, sir?
American fencing.
Do you have a purchase order for that?
Yes.
Okay. Do you provide that to us on the, on the thirty?
DPW will provide that, Sue.
Where is the fencing going?
Where's this going?
Yeah, I'm, I, where is this fencing going?
At the culvert that was recently installed near Shirley Park Road on the rail trail. The head walls are nine, nine feet tall on the edge of the trail.
Don't pick on this guy, all right?
I just ask a simple question.
It's Christmas week, all right?
And how high are these fences?
Ten feet.
It's a two-rail fence, wood fence.
What's the height, three feet, four feet?
Yes.
Okay, so nine plus three is-
You could put a diving board in there. Well, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
When the stream is at-
Okay. So I need a, an, a motion to proceed, no, with the encumbrances, we should, we have to vote on that, and the amount of one-
We're gonna do that at the special meeting.
You can do that, we'll do that.
Can I do it all at the time?
I'm-
Do we? I'd rather just do this one and then add to the next one, just in case.
Nick had some questions on a couple of them.
Right.
I'd rather go through it.
Well, you wanna just-
And the American fencing element isn't here.
Pull the guardrail out then.
Pull the guardrail out, pull your fence out.
Yeah.
Well, fence isn't in here.
Okay, it's not in there anyway, so.
It's not in there.
What was your number, Sue, one million, three thousand?
Three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-two cents.